Your name and your address when you come up to the podium. Thank you very much.
Hey, everybody. Maggie McKee, 117 Rossin Road in Quincy. So I'm here to talk about an item in the budget that affects every other item, and it's the body that we're in right now, the city council. So the council makes recommendations, policy recommendations, and local laws. And one of the local laws it made last year was to raise councilor's salaries by 50%. So with the council budget set to spike in January, I wanted to find out what that money is supposed to pay for and whether taxpayers are getting their money's worth. I read through the city charter, the city code relating to the council, the city council rules, and council committee meeting agendas on the city website. Here's what I found. According to Council Rule 25, the council is supposed to hold a public hearing every month on the second Monday of the month. According to Council Rule 26, at any public hearing held by the council, each speaker can take 10 minutes to address the topic at hand for a total of up to three hours. If there's time left after everyone has weighed in on the hearing subject, Rule 26 says that people can address other issues. Both of these discoveries came as a shock to me because the council has repeatedly refused to hold public hearings over issues that residents, including myself, have asked them to. And when the council does hold a rare public hearing, people are often given just a few minutes to talk or have their mics cut off if the council deems the subject off-topic. I also discovered that most of the council's 19 committees don't meet. Only two of the 19 have met in the last year, and of the others, the next most recent meeting took place in 2020. Seven committees show no record on the city website of ever meeting. According to Chapter 19 of the city code, councilor's duties include identifying and discussing issues impacting the city of Quincy, receiving and considering public input, and making appropriate decisions in a manner which encourages full and open discussion. But this city council rarely debates issues among themselves, and that is clear in the votes they take. A listing of all the votes on issues before the council in 2024 shows that out of 157 votes, only one had any dissenting votes. That means that 99.4% of the time, all councilors voted as one. Even for contentious issues like the Granite Links Golf Club lease extension, where dozens of residents spoke out against the deal, arguing that it benefited developers over taxpayers, not a single counselor voted against the lease. When so many residents opposed the plan, it's hard to see how councilors fulfilled their duty under Chapter 19 of the city code to represent the residents of Quincy. As a taxpayer, these things deeply concern me, and I hope that the council will start following its own rules and set monthly hearings and truly debate the issues that come before it.
I'm Heather Doni, and I live at 912 Southern Artery. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. It's what?
I think it's pretty comfortable.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Perhaps a few people on the city council are sick of hearing about this, but some of us are here to speak about the Quarry Hills Golf Course lease again in the context of current budgetary concerns. Maybe the city council is under the impression that this lease is a done deal because you voted for the home rule petition, saying the mayor could enter a lease of his choosing. But that petition goes before the State House soon, and there's still room for the mayor and his team to think more carefully about the choices that they are making. We're asking for you, city council, and fellow citizens following the process to help facilitate and encourage this rethink. We heard that there'll be a land appraisal done under considerable political pressure and believe that that is one step in the right direction. We need more good governance measures like that to be commonplace. We need political pressure encouraging city leadership to do the right thing all the time. Meanwhile, absent an adequate level of this, Quincy residents are becoming more concerned about how this city is spending money and what kinds of processes are being undertaken to over-leverage us all so badly. Whether we're underwater due to excessive raises or large religious statues for public buildings or land giveaways to favor developers, none of it is okay. The Quarry Hills Golf Course lease is just one example of the latter and shows how this city is often not exhibiting proper stewardship or fiscal responsibility over resources that rightfully belong to all of us, the residents and the taxpayers. When it comes to the new Quarry Hills lease, and it is a new lease rather than an extension, the city has repeatedly said, if they make money, we make money. But anyone paying attention can see we're pretty far in the red due to many questionable city financing decisions, and with economically lean times ahead, and that's probably where we are, we believe the city should have to work to prove the veracity of that kind of statement here and with each upcoming big business decision it makes. Meanwhile, there's a lot of other ways you could finish that sentence. Here's a few, and please see if you can come up with a few more. If they make money, we let the developers keep it because we disinherited our children with a forever lease. If they make money, we might make a little while they make a lot because we gave it away for a fraction of what it's worth. If they make money, we won't know that they did and may not get our share of that money because we don't have an oversight board or an audit. If they make money, we will turn a blind eye to the ongoing lease defaults in exchange for a check. If they make money, we will have a fancy golf course for rich people and canceled sports games due to flooded fields, inaccessible parking lots, and trashy half-finished trails for everyone else. If they make money, we might have to watch this land become a new kind of dump after getting subleased to foreign investors, private equity, or others who do not care about what happens in or to our city. If they make money, we may very well wonder why we ever trusted this promise of money without a proper guarantee. Part of balancing a city budget is getting the right ethical and civic-minded framework in place. We need the city council to insist on informed and responsible financial management and prevent a continuation of the pattern of sweetheart deals and insider moves like this Quarry Hills Forever lease that are leaving the ordinary people who live in and love the city short-changed and left out. Please start by asking the mayor to choose better, strike stronger deals for us with developers like Quarry Hills and any other business leases and development projects coming down the pike. Please help patch the budget by first knowing the value our city holds and then making sure that developers and anyone else coming for a piece of this place knows that, too. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Maria Mulligan, 21 with Rebaev. Thank you for inviting me to this hearing tonight. I'm going to continue to talk about the Forever lease. That's our affectionate term for it. And so on behalf of the Quincy, I'm sorry, Quarry Hills Citizen Advocates, which is a group that I chair, we continue to advocate for the city to follow fiscal responsible practices in executing the current and future leases for Granite Links Golf Course so that we can continue to benefit from this important source of revenue. To that end, I'd like to make two recommendations tonight. One regarding the budget and another one regarding some new information that we've just received from the Office of the Inspector General about golf courses. So the first one is about the budget. So as written, the FY 2026 budget report doesn't address revenues from the golf course. There's no line items in there, that I could find at least, that shows how much we made, you know, in past years or how much we're expecting to make. And that's important information to know because it's a source of income, you know, a large source of income. That should be transparent. So to improve transparency, we recommend those line items be added. We also encourage you to set the expectation that the administration will seek your approval when they want to spend those funds. And I say this because, remember in the first round when we were advocating, we found that some of the funds for the Oversight Fund that's supposed to be dictated by the lease was spent on things like Christmas lights, and it's not supposed to be spent on things like that. So, you know, please seek approval before they spend that money. The second thing I want to talk about is this report that we just received. It's called the Advisory on Municipal Golf Course Management Contracts. It's a thing of rare beauty, actually. It was put together by the Office of Inspector General, and in it, it has all kinds of really great advice on making good contracts between municipalities and operators of golf courses to protect the taxpayer. So I'll send this to you after the meeting. So I encourage you to carefully review all the due diligence recommendations in this And a couple of quotes from the report that I thought was pretty eye-opening. One of them is municipal officials have the responsibility to protect our public assets, the golf course, ensure contracts are adhered to, and ensure taxpayers get what they are paying for under the contract. Municipalities should not rely on vendor relationships or the belief that the legal and moral weight of the contract itself will ensure compliance. We've been saying this for two years. Trust and verify, and it says it right in this report, trust and verify. Without adequate reporting and controls, municipalities have no assurance that they are receiving fair and complete share of the revenue. So, you know, you didn't have this report when you voted on it last December. If you did, I really think you wouldn't have voted the way that you did to send this to the State House. But regardless, regardless of the determination of the home rule petition, which is at the State House right now, we continue to advocate strongly that the city council support a resolution to demand that the city perform due diligence in accordance with this report, audit the rent, which has never been done, negotiate a better deal that secures more revenue for the city of Quincy for us moving forward. We need the money.
Maria, we're over the four, so if you could wrap it up.
Yep, one more sentence. Now, you don't need permission to make a resolve for this. You could do this today. And you could also come with us to the State House when they have a public hearing on this, which is going to be within the next month. I invite you all. I'll save your seats. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. My name's Gene Baruson. I live at 73 Edison Street. I'm in Ward Two with Counselor Ash. And thank you for the opportunity to ask a few questions. Being a homeowner in Quincy, I'm always interested in the tax rate for real estate.
Louder, please.
Louder?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try. Interested in the tax rate. So following in the Ledger and the Sun, the mayor seems to indicate that we're right in the middle of the taxation. My shock was I found out that for cities over 100,000 people, we're number one. Every citizen owns $10,289. Number two is Cambridge. They only owe $3,600. So just curious about the message that the mayor's office is sending out to homeowners. Another one is back in 2023, the S&amp;P said Quincy was on the hook for $1.1 billion in debt. Recently, the Quincy Patriot Ledger said, oh, no, we're up to $1.6 billion. Kind of curious, in two years, how did we manage to get $500 million more in debt? That obviously has to be paid for. We're talking about your 8.6%, I guess, over budget, higher than last year. Well, the last time we had an 8-point-something percent increase in budget, I wound up with $1,500 increase in real estate taxes because we had to raise the tax to pay for all the bills. Is that going to happen again? Are the homeowners going to get another $2,000, $3,000 real estate tax increase? Now, the destruction of Al Capulco Restaurant, paying real estate taxes, had employees, people come into Quincy to go to the restaurant, paved over for a mini park. It's after $6 million. What do we get out of it? Someplace for people to sit down and throw McDonald wrappers, and then DPW gets to clean them up. No money back on that one. Did the owner of the Al Capulcos find another place in Quincy to set up his business and continue paying taxes? Probably not. Now, when IHOP was moved from their location to the new building, Quincy tried to work with them. We gave them $1.2 million to move their kitchen. This is a company that made over $3 billion in pure profit. Why are we giving them money to move their kitchen so they can continue making more money? Oh, by the way, on your website for Welcome to Quincy, the Hertz station that you have listed for car rentals doesn't rent to people. It only rents to Ubers. And your website needs a lot of help for having a tourist come to Quincy. And thank you very much for the chance to talk.
Kathy Thrun from 234 Everett Street in Wallaston. In April, the budget, the mayor announced in the Quincy Sun that we were going to have a lean budget. I'm sorry, but this is not a lean budget. Quincy's per capita spending is second only to Boston. That's not lean. It's robust at best. It's excessive at worst. We were given, the public, just one week to review 356 pages. The mayor offered a summary, but I only heard one question from this council. No other questions for the mayor? We've heard promises for years that more development would mean more revenue. The 2025 budget claimed $20.1 million in additional revenue over three years. The 2026 budget claims exactly the same amount. Maybe a cut-and-paste era, but there's a lot of pages in that exec summary that are virtually identical between '25 and '26. Even if we take the $20.1 million over three years, that's about $7 million a year. That's not going to go very far towards a $35 million difference this year. Every category of expense went up. One of the biggest places it went up, it was in salaries. Over half the budget is salaries. In 2023, the city council approved the Gallagher Report and increased salaries for department heads and for some officials. As I looked at the salaries today, most of the salaries, a good portion of them, are over $100,000. Do you know what the median salary in Quincy for your average citizen is? It's not $100,000. It's $95,000 for a median family. Very upsetting. And some staff actually earn over $100,000 in overtime. I think we need to manage our budgets a little bit better. And let's not forget that you voted for your own raises and for the mayor's raise. And let's look at the pension for a moment. I don't know how much we've drawn down on the pension bond yet. I know that it's a massive debt. But how much have we had to take out to cover pension? On pension, what have we done to manage the pension? Have we looked at reducing benefits? Have we looked at making contributions higher? This is called managing a budget. Now let's talk about debt. Debt, as Gene has indicated, our debt service exceeds even Boston's by 35%. Page 15 of the executive summary paints a picture of declining debt using ratios. If you go to the 2025 debt book, and believe me, it's not pleasant reading. It's a lot of numbers. Well, then, our debt payment does not go down until it's over $70 million, right straight through 2038. That's 13 years of that much debt. And I don't know if the state's going to make up the difference, gentlemen. Not this year. Short-term debt also jumped. So probably it went from $8 to $12 million this year. You got to stop with debt. I have stood in front of you, other members of the public have stood in front of you and have asked you to please stop doing any more debt. You going to do more debt in 2026? I would suggest that it's not a good idea. Now, Standard &amp; Poor has taken notice. In their April 2025 report, they revised Quincy's outlook to negative, citing rising costs, limited flexibility, and ballooning debt. Rising debt, rising salaries, rising costs across the board. It's time to manage the budget. It's a little late to manage the budget, but it's time right now. I ask you, who's going to be able to afford to live in Quincy? I don't know if I'm going to. Maybe that's a good thing for you guys. Thank you.
My wife Cindy and I have been lifelong, are still lifelong residents. We're 75 years old. We've been taxpayers and homeowners since 1971. We just made the latest installment on over $10,000 of real estate taxes, and we are very happy to live in Quincy. We have wonderful services for a large part and great service from our public servants. However, I do want to make a few quick comments. Some have been made by previous speakers. During the mayor's budget proposal last week, I found it, I don't need Miracle Air, I found it to be extremely hard, you know, to hear what the proceedings were containing. I think this microphone, whatever the sound system problem is, needs to be rectified. Absolutely. Also, on a $455.8 million budget, we only heard praise from the councilors, basically. I know you have a hard job, and we need to talk about the good things, but there was only one substantive question about any line item at all or any question, really, about what if, what do we do about likely coming cuts from, you know, federal funding? And we have to have a plan for that. Next, the debt service has been mentioned before as a line item. $75 million in this proposed budget. What is the actual debt? What is the amount? The interest rate? What's the timeframe? Will there be unspecified and undisclosed spending in this budget as there has been with the statues at the public safety headquarters and the cemetery gates? Is there any plan to meet the debt service on this massive amount of money, maybe up to $1.6 billion with a B dollars? Also, on the line item, the election's budget proposal is for $1.2 million. The last election, we had about 20,000 registered voters turned out, out of about 55,000 or more. I think we need to do a lot to improve the voter turnout in our city. Some of that's up to us as citizens, some of it's up to the election officials and the council. They're doing a good job, but it needs to improve. I want to know if there's any response to the use of COVID relief funds that were spent for the gates under the money that was appropriated for the cemetery, $3.1 million. $800,000 was spent on the gates. Likewise with the statues, $850,000 that was not approved. Nobody knew about it ahead of time. It was the mayor's vision, and nobody else was involved as far as we can tell. COVID money was supposed to be to help individuals and businesses that were really affected by COVID. And I think there's a big story behind the misappropriation of those funds, including the purchase of the Monroe Building. I'm wrapping up here. With global warming, it's strange to me that we don't have, with all the other departments that we have, and being a seaside community, that we do not have an environmental department or an official commission to deal with environmental issues. And my last point, it's been brought up many times before, with taxes rising and more and more of a senior population, I'll include myself in that, we need to do something for tax relief for senior citizens who have built this city through the generations with their tax money. Thank you so much.
2009. And my concerns about the budget are, one is that the money that's being spent on public safety and police versus the schools, you know, in the last contract negotiation with the teachers, you know, there was a lot of disdain for the fact that they wanted a raise, right? So when I see that, again, I see that we're valuing, we're kind of valuing building a carceral state here in Quincy rather than an educational state where we want to invest, there's a higher amount of money going to public safety. And after the amount of money that has been spent on the, I call it the police palace, I drive by it every day, and the statues and all that, it just feels like, to see also in here that there are new positions being added for public safety. The police would add new patrol officers, a senior investigative liaison, and an evidence control specialist. When this is kind of debt, I wonder if we should be adding like three-figure positions? And also, this, I thought, the fire department, they were going to add 16 positions that are funded through a three-year federal grant. So what happens when that grant runs out? That's going to be money that the city has to pick up and the taxpayers have to pick up. So, yeah, we need public safety, but are we overspending on public safety? I feel like we may be doing that. Another position I wondered about was the Senior Fraud and Scam Liaison to the city's Elder Services Department. They probably should have had that before the last director was working there. I don't see why we would be needing to add $90,000 position for that. You know, so there's other positions as well, but those were some things that I found problematic. If we're in that much debt, can we really afford to be hiring new people? And who's going to get those jobs? You know, is it going to be more patronage, friends and family of people in the city who already work for the city? When I went around knocking doors to work on different issues, lots of people told me they worked for the city and they didn't dare to be on record about anything that was critical of the city. There's an environment of real fear in Quincy. People have jobs. They want to keep their jobs. They're afraid to say anything. So I don't trust the budget because I don't feel the oversight has been there. And the debt, I agree with everybody, the debt is way too much. So those are the main topics. I'd love to see more money go into libraries and stop buying up eminent domain and pushing businesses out of the city. I have a Patty Barry shirt on. I have, I know that was an eminent domain, but, you know, there's other businesses that have been pushed out by eminent domain. I do all my shopping out of Quincy. There's not many places you can shop here. And more and more of those places are getting shut down. So, and we might get a Trader Joe's, but, you know, what about good health? What about all the other businesses that were long-term businesses here that have been pushed out for park-a-parks, bridges to nowhere, and cop cathedrals? Thank you.
I'll keep this brief. I've never been here before, but I, my name is Greg Strusell. I live at 93 Bayside Road. And I'm concerned, I've seen the trends over the years in higher taxes. The spending is out of control, especially with the statues that I've been reading a lot about. And I just want to say that the quote in the Quincy Sun the other day was, the mayor called this a hefty budget increase. His word hefty, I think I need, I would like some support here in the council to use the word unacceptable for an 8.6% increase in spending. A CEO at a major corporation would get thrown out of the room for that kind of increase. I hope that, as a concerned citizen, that you're watching out for our taxpayer dollars because it's continuously gone up. And like the gentleman who said he did a lot of research, we know where you're going to hit us with that kind of increase. Please don't.
46 Tilden Circle. Counselors, in all of my years of reviewing city budgets, this year's proposed budget sets a new high for problems. Louder? I'm sorry. Does that help? Okay. I'm trying, Dave, but I'm soft-spoken, Dave. Be careful what you ask for. Anyway, it sets a new high for problems. For starters, on page 15 of the budget book, the administration asserts that Quincy has a double-A rating with a stable outlook and which is the second highest rating as well as the same rating as the federal debt. Reality, last month, Standard &amp; Poor slapped the city of Quincy with a negative outlook. A double-A rating is the third highest rating, and the US debt rating is double-A plus. In short, 0 for 3. And that's just early in the budget book. Further reality, a rating cut is likely, given that just short of 20% of the proposed budget is going to debt service with even more likely, more of the same likely in following years. The imposition of considerable local tax increases is coming. Trust me on that. Next up, the proposed budget does not include anything to cover rank and file, city employee raises, as their current contracts expire in coming weeks, but no new agreements are in place. I will defer from making comment much about the 45% raises that you all have in the proposed budget, but I must note that assuming first-year raises per inevitable new contracts at the same rate as the last year of the expiring contracts, FYI employee compensation would go up by around $9 million and thus see FY 2026 spending go up by roughly 11% from FY 25, and so set a new spending record increase. Instead, however, the mayor's looking to delay raises for city employees as well as whack taxpayers later. whack taxpayers later to cover the eventual raises. Such is not responsible financial planning. Further problematic, the budget does not, does not, does not again show an annual $5 million payment towards the $30 million debt service restricted reserve fund balance mandated per the $475 million pension obligation bond indenture. As this reserve is contractually mandated, how is it being funded? Is it is not noted in the budget? Admittedly, I have theories, but such should be duly addressed by the administration, especially as the sun, the funding would be highly problematic per my theories to perhaps even illegal. Speaking of pension funding, last February, the pension employee, the Public Employees' Retirement Administration Commission directed the city of Quincy to put 13 million more in the city employee pension fund as its investment portfolio has underperformed. Specifically, it lost $100 million in value in its first year several years ago and is thus underfunded at this point. Nowhere, however, is the $15 million payment noted in the FYI 2026 budget or otherwise disclosed. Again, I have some theories as to how this nut will be covered. However, it is up to you all to find it exactly how during the upcoming budget meetings, hearings. Be sure to further note that similar PERC assessments are likely going to happen in forward, going forward in future years unless the return on investment on the portfolio most unexpectedly enjoys extraordinarily outsized returns on investment in coming years. Net-net, taxpayers will likely not be seeing the $168 million in savings long touted by the mayor by going with a P O B to make the city employee pension fund actuarially whole. In fact, theoretical savings have already been cut by close to a third, with more cuts likely to fall and perhaps even eventually crossing over into the red. It's the highly leveraged plan to borrow money to invest is hitting the fan. Something which I, by the way, I reminded most among you over three years ago could happen by going with the innately risky and thus widely not recommended plan to go with the P O B when it was under consideration in this chamber. In the meanwhile, how roughly $30 million in what are appropriate charges to FY 26 spending are going to be funded is currently unknown, as well as that the $30 million is on top of $36 million spending increase per the proposed budget. In short, so much for a lean budget as once was said by the mayor. In any event, it's now up to you, you all, to address how these problems that I have posed will, or face the consequences. Thank you for your time and consideration.
My name's Bob Haley. I live at 75 Elmore Park. I'm here tonight to pose several serious questions on the retirement and the pension line items in the fiscal 2026 budget. A bit of background, shortly after the first of the new year, the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission, better known as PERC, sends out a letter to each municipality advising them of their respective pension assessment for the upcoming fiscal year. The assessment is for so-called normal costs for the upcoming year, which entails such things as changes to active employee numbers, various other changes in any prior year investment losses as determined by the most recent formal actuarially, actuarial evaluation of the pension system. Quincy was sent such a letter by PERC on February 11, 2025, calling for a $16 million assessment appropriation for fiscal year 2026. The amount is based on the funding schedule adopted by the Quincy Retirement Board. The most recent actuarial evaluation report submitted to the Quincy Retirement Board on October 8, 2024 by Stone Consulting for the period ending January 1, 2024. While the report states in part, the city was fully funded in fiscal year 2022 as a result of bond proceeds, investment losses and other changes in the last two years have caused liabilities to exceed assets. Accordingly, the city of Quincy's appropriation for fiscal year 2026 will be $16 million and is set to resume a 5.4% annual increase, which was in effect before the city issued pension obligation bonds in fiscal year 2022. However, the city's budget line item for this year shows no such appropriation, zero dollars. My first question to you is what outside funding source is being used to fund this appropriation? Because it has to get paid. Next, what funding source did the administration rely on in fiscal year 2025 when the same budget line item expenditure was reduced by $4.2 million by Mayor Koch when he submitted Article 2024 149 to the city council in December of 2024? Further, does the city of Quincy have a funding source outside of the regular budget process that can continue to fund this line item going forward for as many years as might likely be necessary? In turn, if the city faces likely further significant PERC pension funding assessments in the future years, but the unknown to me funding source that has been tapped runs dry, future assessments will likely result in potentially significant budget shortfalls going forward. A forward, a further related concern of mine is the city of Quincy, as you know, issued $475 million of pension obligation bonds in December of 2021. Roughly a year later, on December 6, 2022, PERC sent a letter to the Quincy Retirement Board changing the city's funding schedule to require only $445 million to be provided to the pension fund. The Quincy Retirement Board audited dated 12/31/23 states in part, the city of Quincy contributed an additional $445 million of proceeds from the pension obligation bond to the retirement board in December of 2022. At that point, what happened to the excess $30 million in bond proceeds from the $475 Is the city using any of these funds to pay off the $16 million appropriation which is due and payable to the retirement board this year? Has any part been used of that to pay for previous PERC assessments or any other uses? Needless to say, my concerns are both considerable as well as valid. Local taxpayers have every right to know what has happened to millions of dollars, how they're being used and what funding sources the city is using to fund the normal pension costs due every year. Simply put, you all need to press the administration for a comprehensive explanation in regards to the tens of million dollars. Thanks for your time and your consideration.
Okay. So I want to ask you guys a favor. I want to ask you to make this the year that we turn this around because one of you might be our mayor someday and the mess that's being left is going to be incredibly hard to clean up. And what I'm concerned about is the next person in charge is going to be cutting services, raising taxes beyond what the people in Quincy can pay and basically turning this, from this city that we've, that you've built into something that we don't recognize because we wound up in so much debt. And it's happened in other cities and it can happen here. I want you to take a look at what happened last week when the mayor gave his presentation and when I wrote to Eric Mason about it, they sound like they're very happy with things that are going. And I have to ask you, are you, do you think things are going in the right direction? Because if you are, then, then you've been lulled further than I think that you should have been. Because right now, what we need you to do is every department head that gets up here, we need you to ask them, what can you do to trim this budget? What can you do to cut down on overtime? There is so much overtime being spent in this city. Our personnel costs are going up well beyond inflation. We are just raising salaries. We are not, and I'm not just talking about the, the famous ones. I'm talking about all over the place. Their salaries are going up above inflation. And when you ask why, I keep being told it's because an arborist left. Now, I understand, that's an important position. I want us to have a good arborist. But there are other people to hire at market rate. We don't need to start overpaying everybody. We don't need to start paying crazy overtime to keep people here. And so I want you to, as these talks go on, ask every one of them, what can we do? Not what did you do? Because they're going to say this is my, our budget. What can we do to make this a little bit less? Because we're going 8.6% higher than last year. We, last year, I believe there was a $17 million shortfall in just average spending. It might've been 34 million. It's hard to read the numbers, but we're on, we're on schedule to do it again. And then what is going to keep happening, because our debt service, even though it's leveling out, is not going to go down. And that's the best case scenario. So this is why we voted for you. We need you to do this. We need you to come to these meetings ready with your pencil and your red pen and help us out here. All right? That's all. Thanks.
Good evening. Good evening. My name's Debbie Riley and I live at 9 Langgrain Street. A lot of the topics and things that I had concerns about have already been addressed, so I won't repeat anybody. But I will say that, you know, on behalf of every property taxpayer, we really do need to think about spending other people's money more mindfully. And there's so many great things that happen in this city. I don't think anyone disputes that. There are so many things that we love about this city, but we have to ask ourselves, what is it costing each and every taxpayer? Because those are the people that are struggling. They're worrying. People are selling their homes because they struggle to pay their property taxes. And so I would ask that when you make these decisions, when we look at all these programs, that we think about those people who are, are struggling and are not necessarily taking advantage of it. So the only item on the budget that I did want to point out, need the glasses, as I am now technically considered a senior, is with the budget category 541, the Council on Aging, line item number 510029, the additional creation of a position for senior fraud and scam liaison at $90,000 a year. This brand-new position, which I can't imagine has a, a job description that's readily available. How will this person be evaluated in their effectiveness for this job in reducing senior fraud and scams? Why is this only available to seniors? Is this not a, a service that maybe every constituent could benefit from? And, and what exactly are they going to do? Are they going to just hold, you know, monthly, you know, events to, to help people, you know, recognize these scams? They've become more and more sophisticated. I think what we need to do is, we really should look at these types of line items and we should start to post jobs. Post jobs with job descriptions. Post them so that people know what they can expect from this person. And I think that we need to, I had one more thing I wanted to say. I couldn't understand why this position wasn't maybe either under or in coordination with the police department. It would seem like most of this, this type of fraud really comes down to a crime. And, and why isn't it coordinated with the technology budget? It seems a bit odd that the, that the, the position would be under senior services. So I would ask that you consider maybe, maybe striking this one item from the budget and show the taxpayers that you're willing to take some stand on something. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is David Frankel. I live on Euclid Ave, 30-plus years. I am an employee for the city. I wasn't going to speak, but I'm like, I'm hearing all this pension talk. The way the pension works for me is every week, a cut out of my paycheck gets sent to the pension board. I don't, as far as I know, what I pay is what I get back. I don't know why the city keeps running short, like when we lost the $3 million a couple of years ago to the email scam. It, it's, it's bizarro, man. I have an Acorns account that I started two years ago that's got more interest in it than anything, the pensions that I've had, that I've invested for five years so far, has accrued. I think the interest rate, I just got a statement, it was like 0.002%. Like what a joke. I, so it, it's, I find it amazing that we're like $16 million out when I'm paying every week out of my own paycheck. Again, I don't know how it works for everybody else here at the city council, maybe they match you or whatever, but my money out of my pocket, my sweat goes into that pension fund and it kills me that we can't seem to get this right. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Could you hear me? Yeah, okay. Okay. I'm Ziqiang Yuan. Many of, many of you know me as Susan when I was connecting signatures and organizing protests against the pay race issue. So I'm living at 8 Harvest Land, Unit 2. And I see the 2026 budget, the city is going to hire more police officers. And my question is, do we need more police officers? Don't get me wrong, police officers are highly respected. Their work is essential to keep, to keeping our community safe and they often put their own lives at risk. They absolutely deserve fair and competitive pay. That said, since their time is so valuable, we should consider whether every task they are assigned truly requires a police officer. For example, at many road construction site, we often see officers standing by, not just one, quite often two officers. But in many cases, trained construction workers wearing reflective gear could safely direct traffic. Oh, oh, sorry. Should I repeat that sentence? Okay. So for example, at many road construction sites, we often see officers standing by, not only one, quite often two, but in many cases, trained construction workers wearing reflective gear could safely direct traffic. On quieter local roads, this should be enough. For busy highway, yes, assigning an officer may be necessary, but we should be thoughtful about how we use police time and the resources. This is just one example. If civilians can handle certain tasks that don't require a sworn officer, we may be able to reduce overtime costs and reassign police to more critical responsibilities like preventing and solving crimes. This is simply my honest opinion. We should be able to talk openly about how public money is spent, including on police, without being unfairly labeled as anti-police. That kind of name-calling and silencing is something I have seen firsthand in an autocratic country I lived in and I hope America can do better.
Alley Shaughnessy, 16 Bay Street. Everybody hear me? I probably don't need this. Okay. So listening to people talk about the taxes and the fact that they're so high, it just, it, I, I think about the city of Quincy and then I think about Milton that's right next door to us. Now, the average tax rate in Milton is $14,000 a year, roughly. The average tax rate in the city of Quincy is $7,000 a year. In Quincy, you can leave, you could leave a dead elephant out on the end of the street and they're going to pick it up on rubbish day and you don't have to put a sticker on it. You don't have to pay extra for it. They're going to pick it up. Two o'clock in the morning, if you have a surge backup in your house, I've experienced this, if you've had a surge backup in your house, you don't have to call Road or Ruder. You pick up the phone and you dial the DPW and there's someone there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And they're going to send out a crew and they're going to figure out why you have a surge backup in your house. They're going to Road or Ruder it or whatever they have to do, even if they have to dig up the street, they're going to stay there until they fix it. And where do you get the bill? You don't get a bill. In the city of Quincy, when you want to send your kids to a good school, we have good schools. Are they the best schools in Massachusetts? Not according to, you know, if you look at Boston Magazine and stuff, but they're really good schools. And we're right on the ocean and it's clean. We do the best we can to rebuild our seawalls to protect the properties that we have to pay taxes on. And I get tired of everybody beating up the city. Because frankly, I think this is a great city and we have to pay taxes. Yeah, but that's the way it is. And we have a lot of debt. We have a lot of debt because this is a business and businesses that grow need And businesses that grow need debt to grow. Now, you can control your debt, admittedly. Should we spend money on, on excessive statues? I don't know. But I know this, I love the idea of having a police station and a public safety building that is really the model for the state, as opposed to a police station that was falling apart for 25 years. The place leaked every single day. So I'm not coming up here to beat you up. All I'm going to say is when you guys take a look at, and I want to look at this stuff as well, I just happened to see a little piece of the budget tonight. I don't have a lot of time to look at that, I'm trying to run a business myself, but I, I want to congratulate all of you. I think you do a great job. That's what I think here in the city of Quincy. Thank you. I know, you can boo me, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Merrill Smith, I live at 154 Granger Street in Quincy. Okay, you're welcome. Okay, but what I just heard was a bunch of nonsense, okay? Let's, let's start breaking that down. One, Milton's tax rate is higher than Quincy's tax rate. Milton has no industry. We have tons of industry. We ought to have a lower tax rate because the industry ought to supplement what we need in this city, okay? That is a ridiculous comparison, okay? You've got a city with nothing and a city with a ton of industry and construction. Every time you turn around, there's construction. Every single street in this city, at one point or another this past year, has been under construction, okay? The mayor is continuing to make contracts and, and do what we have to do to improve the city, but at whose cost? At whose cost, okay? I'm not seeing any benefit of half those things, but I'm going to just tell you, I said, as far as raises and pensions and all this other stuff, okay? I think the pensions and the raises ought to be equal across the entire city, okay? What the police get for a raise, the teachers should get for a raise, and the mayor should get for a raise, and the city council should get for a raise. We should all be getting the same percentage every year and not inflate any job as being more superior than others because we're all working for the same cause, and that is us. That's it.
I think that's it. And we, we welcome all the thoughts and, and we know how involved you folks are. With that, I will close.